All right. Good morning. Welcome to the April the 18th meeting of the Baldwin County Commission. And at this time, we have Reverend Brent Shaw will lead us to the invocation and followed by the pledge from Commissioner Ball.
Thank you. Would you please bow your head and pray with me? Father, as a psalmist reminds us, this is the day the Lord has made and we'll rejoice and be glad in it. Father, the day truly is a great day. We're blessed beyond measure because of how good you've been to us. Father, you placed us here in this wonderful county and this great state and this great nation. And Father, we're all recipients of your grace and your mercy each and every day. So Father, as citizens, help us to live our lives in ways that would be pleasing to you, that will lift others up, Father, build bridges, and help our nation to be even stronger. And Father, we pray today for our county commissioners as they conduct the business of the people. Or would you give them wisdom and insight to handle anything that comes their way? Father, would you help them, as with us, to live our lives with integrity and speak truth? Father, we love you and we thank you for loving us first. And I just pray your blessings over each commissioner and their families. Or would you just watch over them, protect them, and bless them as you blessed us? Father, we love you. Again, thank you for allowing us to be here today. And it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all very much. Okay. First on the meeting is the adoption of the April the 4th, 2023 regular meeting.
Same move.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball to approve the regular meeting of April the 4th. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, next is the payment of the bills. Commissioner Underwood.
Sorry, I've got a lot of paperwork up here. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve payment of the bills and distribution of taxes which are listed in the Baldwin County accounts payable payments.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball to pay the bills for Baldwin County Commission. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it. Right next is the notification from interpayments approved by the Hook Treasurer as allowed under policy 8.1. So those are on record. All right, next is the consent agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve our consent agenda with any notations noted by staff.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve the consent agenda as noted. All right, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, next is presentations. Next, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First item DA 1 was addressed during work session. Second item is item DA 2, which is Baldwin County Environmental Advisory Committee, the 2023 Environmental Stewardship Awards. Ms. Ashley Campbell, would you take over, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am so excited to be here today. I want to give you a little brief history of the Environmental Advisory Committee because a lot of our audience probably is not aware, but the Environmental Advisory Committee was established in 1993 by the Commissioners. They wanted them to help them with education and policy for decisions that the Commission would make. In 1998, the Commission asked them to do an Environmental Advisory Stewardship Award to bring to y'all for award recipients for leaders in the environment with stewardship in Baldwin County. So today, on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Committee, I'm here, I'm staff member, Ashley Campbell, I'm the Natural Resource Planner in Planning and Zoning. Today, I would proudly introduce Mr. Brett Gar and Mr. Tom Schmitz, they're our Chair and Vice Chair, to come up and to present to you our nominations for the awards, which y'all will vote on and award on behalf of the committee. So with that, Mr. Tom and Mr. Brett, one thing I would like to point out is today is our 100th awards. These 10 will make 100. And these, all this committee is made up of 14 volunteers, and they meet once a month. And I just cannot express to you their dedication to Baldwin County. So I personally want to thank them and look forward to hearing all these wonderful recipients of these awards. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. And my job is to introduce Tom Schmitz, who's our longest-running member of this committee. And Tom is going to read the resolution and name all the recipients. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. We've got quite a list here today. A lot of folks have qualified for these awards. The resolution to 2023 Environmental Stewardship Award, whereas in July of 1998, the Baldwin County Commission established the annual Environmental Stewardship Awards Program. And whereas the program recognizes citizens, businesses, and agencies that demonstrate sound environmental principles in their day-to-day operations in the hope that all citizens may learn from their examples. And whereas the actions of the award recipients enhance protection of Baldwin County's natural resources, and whereas the actions of the award recipient helps ensure a clean water future for generations to come. And whereas the 2023 award recipient actions are commendable, and now therefore be it resolved by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that the Baldwin County Commission commends and congratulates the following award recipients for their distinguished service and strong commitment to the environment, our community, and all the citizens of Baldwin County, Alabama. In the category of agriculture/forestry, the Alabama Cooperative Extension System Learn to Burn and Prescribed Fire Outreach, Ryan Mitchell. Ryan, would you point us? The Alabama Cooperative Extension System Learn to Burn and Prescribed Fire Programs offer training to landowners to improve habitat, reduce hazard fire fuel loads, and restore forest land of Baldwin County. In 2022, the Alabama Cooperative Extension System offered two Learn to Burn workshops and two Alabama Prescribed Burn Manager certifications courses in Baldwin County. The Learn to Burn and Prescribed Fire Outreach Program is an inspiration and deserves recognition for the outstanding work in Baldwin County, which is creating a clean water future for generations to come. In the category of education programs, James Wallace. Please join us, James. Riviera Utilities Community Outreach Program Support of the Master Environmental Education Program. Riviera Utilities has a community outreach program that allows employees to serve their community while working. The program has been a huge supporter of the Alabama Cooperative Extension Systems' Master Environmental Education Program. Riviera Utility Support has led to conserving energy being one of the teachers' favorite Master Environmental Education Program lessons. The Riviera Utilities Community Outreach helps the program instill the value of preserving Baldwin County's environment to benefit our youth and future generations. In the category of environmental organizations, Western Shore of Perdido Bay Watershed Management Plan Steering Committee, Lonnie Cameron, Lucy Smith, and Mike Cleveland. Western Shore of Perdido Bay Watershed Management Plan Steering Committee, the Western Shore Steering Committee has been meeting for over a year to create a watershed management plan. The committee has been learning, sampling water, and developing their water quality tests to understand the issues and strategize solutions to best preserve, protect, and restore the streams and wetlands of Perdido Bay. The Steering Committee's dedication to preserving and protecting the Perdido watershed is an inspiration and deserves recognition for the outstanding work it is doing. The category of government agencies, Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, Public Land Acquisitions, Commissioner Chris Blankenship. The Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources is the state agency responsible for the conservation and management of Alabama's natural resources, including state parks, state lands, wildlife, and aquatic resources. Since the late 1990s, the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources has administered the purchase of thousands of acres of public land tracts in Baldwin County. These properties conserve habitats for numerous plant and animal species, as well as to provide a host of recreational activities. Hunting, fishing, hiking, bird watching, canoeing, and kayaking are some of the activities enjoyed by the public. The Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources' purchase and preservation of Baldwin County public lands is an inspiration and deserves recognition for its outstanding work, which is creating a clean water future for generations to come. Jackie has been a certified Alabama Water Watch trainer and water quality chair with Wolf Bay Watershed Watch for over five years. Her water quality training has encouraged numerous citizens to be involved in monitoring our waterways. She also has spearheaded several environmental education programs in South Baldwin County, impacting countless youth. Jackie's environmental stewardship is an inspiration and deserves recognition for her Large business category, Porch Creek Indians Coastal Cleanup Sponsorship, Kristy Weatherford. Since 2015, the Porch Creek Indians have been the title sponsor for the Alabama Coastal Cleanup. Their sponsorship has aided in the removal of thousands of pounds of debris and trash from Alabama's coastal waters. The Porch Creek Indians Environmental Stewardship is an inspiration and deserves recognition for the outstanding work which is creating a clean water future for generations to come. The category of nonprofits, Student Conservation Association Gulf Corps, Amber Rooney and The Student Conservation Association's Gulf Corps Programs provides short-term, less than one year, employment for local young adults, including veterans and those from underserved communities, as well as skills training and experience in jobs supporting local workforce development in the growing habitat restoration field. Gulf Corps projects support sustainable fisheries and contribute to the recovery and protected resources by restoring habitat for fish and other resources. Gulf Corps efforts have included assisting in stream restoration and invasive vegetation management, boardwalk repair, and trail maintenance throughout Baldwin County. The Student Conservation Association Gulf Corps Program Environmental Stewardship is an inspiration and deserves recognition for their outstanding work. In the category of small businesses, Daphne Utilities Natural Gas Vehicle Fleet, Scott Daphne Utilities operates a fleet of 16 natural gas vehicles. According to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, greenhouse gas emissions from CNG vehicles may be as much as 20% to 30% less than vehicles powered by gasoline or diesel fuel. Daphne Utilities Environmental Stewardship is an inspiration and deserves recognition for its outstanding work. We have a special recognition award. City of Foley Natural Fish and Wildlife Foundation, Bon Secour River Constructed Wetlands Project, Mayor Ralph Helming.
Come on, Mayor.
Bon Secour, the City of Foley, using National Fish and Wildlife Foundation funding, purchased 88 acres along the headwaters of Bon Secour River to implement a stream restoration and constructed wetland complex. The project is naturally treating the headwaters of Bon Secour River to remove non-point source pollutants for improved water quality and habitat downstream for Baldwin County residents. The City of Foley's environmental stewardship is an inspiration and deserves recognition for their outstanding work in the Bon Secour River, which is creating a clean water future for generations to come. Oliver is a young man on a mission. He has dedicated his time to helping the community through the cleanup of beaches. Clean Horizons is the program that started when Oliver asked what he could do to help clean up the beaches and sea life in his own backyard. Oliver also takes time to go to new classrooms and read his book about him cleaning the beaches. He personally inspires and teaches kids to help their community. Oliver's environmental stewardship is an inspiration and deserves recognition for his outstanding work, which is creating a clean water future for generations to come. outstanding work, which is creating a clean water future for generations to come. And those are our awards for 2023.
And now we'd like to take a group picture, and then afterwards we'll be seated and allow y'all to vote on the resolution. Since we have everyone up, are you okay with that? Taylor, we might need some help.
I want to sing. Want to sing? I will not be singing. If I got down there in front, I'd have to sit by Mr. Oliver.
I'm short, so I'm tarred.
I can see, stand up here.
Thank you.
I got to bite more.
Okay.
All right, Commissioners. Do I hear a motion that we adopt Resolution 2023-098, which recognizes the Baldwin County Economic-- excuse me, Environmental Agency Committee for 2023 Environmental Stewardship Awards recipients and-- thank y'all. Motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say congratulations and thank you to each and every award recipient, the staff that put all this together, the board as well. This is always a great day in our county that the citizens can look and see the initiatives that collaboratively everybody takes countywide and statewide, since Commissioner Blankenship is here as well, in efforts to promote clean environment. I am proud and humbled to be a part of an organization that backs environmental health in this county, especially because people are moving here and they live here for the quality of life that we have here, one of those being the great scenery that we have with our rivers and streams, lakes, and the Gulf of Mexico and bays that surround this area. So protecting those watersheds and the bays and everything else is very top importance on our list, and everyone that received awards here today is a collaborative effort to make sure that we have the good quality of life that we have here in Baldwin County. And just again, thank you and congratulations on your awards. And man, I tell you what, Oliver down there on the end, I mean, that right there is a-- that's the generation that needs to be starting this, so get your friends involved, buddy, and get them all on board because, you know, you're making a difference in lives and you don't even know it yet. And one of these days, you'll see how your hard work has paid off at such a young age because I didn't even think about that when I was your age, so I was probably leaving trash on the beach by mistake. But you've got a great heart and a passion for your environment, and you're a special part of the program today. All these other guys have got it and, you know, know what they're doing, but you're a unique part, and it was awesome and a refreshing thing to see you walk up here today and accept that award like a young man you are, so thank you.
I just want to echo Commissioner Ball. I mean, thank y'all for doing this. Baldwin County is a blessing to live here, and we want to keep it for generations to come, so thank y'all. I think I heard Oliver when we was doing the pledge, and then he was the loudest.
He did the pledge, now, ain't no doubt.
He was awesome, so.
He was over talking me.
But thank you, everybody, that won the awards, and thank you for taking care of Baldwin County and the state of Alabama.
Let's just echo everything they've already said, and yes, I heard you, that sweet little voice, I mean, I'm kidding, I was like, I had to kind of peek, I was like, yes! But it is also very, very, I guess, gratifying to know that you guys are not here for a planning and zoning case. I actually had to double-check, make sure we have a controversial P&amp;Z case on here, so welcome, thank you for coming, yes, yes. But anyways, I just want to thank every one of you. This is amazing to see how much is actually going on out there, and thank you, Ashley, for bringing it before us so that we can actually see all the people who are doing all this work, and just, wow, and to have Commissioner Blankenship here, Dr. Hunter, I mean, thank you, and all of you guys that are here, I don't know everybody's names, but thank you for making the effort to come out and fill in our chambers with a non-P&amp;Z case.
Again, thank each and every one of y'all. You know, it's a partnership that y'all have created to help the community, and well, not just the community, the whole county and the state of Alabama. You know, we had this committee many years ago, and it kind of fell on its face for a while, but we got it back, and y'all really got it going this time, and I appreciate it so much, and I know, Tom, you know, you've been at it for a long time, and I appreciate what you do. You kept after me a long time, you was like, we gotta get that thing going, we gotta get it going, but we gotta go back going, and y'all are doing a great job, and y'all are looking out for the environment, and you got it going, buddy. You're gonna do great. Just keep up the good work, and thank you, Mom and Dad, for allowing you to be able to do that stuff, you know. Y'all are doing a fantastic job of raising harvest, so he's doing it for the right reasons. Thank y'all very much. Okay. Does that all on paper signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay.
This is out of order, I'm sure, but I'm gonna speak on behalf of everybody out here, thank y'all for putting that committee back together, the advisory board. It is all a group effort by all of us out here, and you guys, and on behalf of everybody, thank y'all for restarting.
You're quite welcome.
I was just gonna ask Mr. Chairman if he wanted to make an announcement to-- I'll ask y'all, if y'all want to stay here and hang around and watch the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to, but I know there's a lot of y'all here, probably gotta get back to work, so we'll give y'all some time to exit the building, and thank y'all again.
He's gone.
Bye, Oliver.
Bye, y'all. See y'all later.
Yeah, I need to give.
Oh, yeah, he said aye. Aye. I know that, see, I said, well, he'll miss me if he's the one that's worse policy.
It's Oliver.
All right, next, on the agenda, is the item DA3.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item DA3 is a proclamation National Small Business Week, and staff recommendation is to adopt a proclamation which proclaims the week of April 30th, 2023, through May 6th, 2023, as National Small Business Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Ms. Yolanda Johnson will be available to accept the presentate award.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Well, I want to extend to you a thank you for your support of small businesses all the time, not just during Small Business Week. The Alabama Small Business Development Center, you have supported with explaining and getting the word out about the services of the Small Business Administration through the Small Business Development Center, and I also want to thank you for your support of the Business License, the Business Sales Tax License Department. Sometimes they get left out, but let me tell you, they are working every day for the small businesses in this county, and their patience and the kindness that they show our small businesses are an extension of you, and I want to personally and professionally thank them right here in front of you for supporting them as well. The Alabama Small Business Development Center offers technical assistance to all small businesses across Baldwin County and has for over 40 years. We offer four major no-cost services, starting and growing your business, international trade, government procurement, and evaluation of capital access or financing for those small businesses. And today, you have the opportunity to recognize the National Small Business Week, and today with me, we have the Deputy Director of the Alabama District of the United States Small Business Administration, Mr. L.D. Roth.
Thank you, greetings, Commissioner. Chairman, nice to be here. My name is L.D. Roth. I'm the Deputy District Director for the Small Business Administration in Birmingham, covering Alabama. The SBA is a federal agency that was established in 1953 under the Eisenhower administration for the specific purpose of assisting small businesses to start and grow. We provide assistance along with our resource partners like the SBDC in the areas of counseling, finance, government procurement, and also disaster relief. For more than 50 years, the SBA has been giving out National Small Business Week awards, which recognizes critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners, and that's what we're here today, too. You've got two local winners that we're going to honor, and it's not only just an acknowledgement of material success, but it is also an acknowledgement of someone who gives back civically to the culture, to the community, and to their fellow business owners and other perhaps underserved communities, woman-owned, veteran-owned, minority-owned businesses, so we want to honor that today. Thank you for having us here at the meeting.
So our-- the five winners of the district's SBA awards for Small Business Week included Darrell Thomas of Selma, Mr. Guddy of Birmingham, Alabama, Ms. Howell from Huntsville. And Chairman and Commissioners, the two out of five winners are from Baldwin County. So today, we have with us Christina Warner-Mackinnes of Soil Kit by AgriTech. Christina Warner-Mackinnes is a fifth-generation farmer. Her Warner family has been farming Baldwin County soils for over 100 years. In 2019, Christina founded of AgriTech Corp. and created a product, Soil Kit, which is a soil-healthy technology platform. And Commissioner Ball, this particular product is able-- will enable our citizenry all throughout the nation for water quality health, and all the waters that flow down to that beautiful Gulf of Mexico, for us to start protecting the soil that runs through that is through this very product. It also assists our soil in capturing carbon. This platform starts with a lab-based soil test and finishes with the virtual Soil Kit 365 Annual Program, providing prescriptive product recommendations throughout the year that are customized based on the lawn or crop the user is growing, the chemistry in their soil, and the seasonality of their hardiness zone. Initially, when Soil Kit went to market, it was only direct to customers at soilkit.com and online at Amazon. Under Christina's leadership, AgriTech Corp. landed contracts with eight lawn and garden distributors, one major land-grant university, War Eagle, and one big retailer, and dozens of landscape companies in its first year of operation. The Alabama Small Business Development Center, an SBA partner, has been a part of Christina's team since conception. Like many businesses, AgriTech had suffered during the pandemic as a young company, but was able to secure SBA's paycheck protection program and an injury, economic injury disaster loan for relief. Ladies and gentlemen, Christina Warner-Mackinnes and Haden Dren. That award was the Alabama Rural-Owned Small Business of the Year. The next one, the Alabama Veteran-Owned Small Business of the Year, Sidney Cody of Vanguard Pacific, Foley, Alabama. Sidney Cody served for nearly six years as a naval officer in the Civil Engineers Corps, where she worked for Naval Facilities Engineering Systems Command as the Assistant Resident Officer in Charge of Construction for Military Construction Projects. She also completed a tour of duty overseas in Africa, where she left approximately 120 Seabees executing various rudimentary construction projects across the continent in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. Can we have an applause thanking her for her service to our country? She purchased 51% of Vanguard Pacific in 2016, assuming 100% ownership in 2020. Vanguard Pacific is a government construction company with services ranging from greenfield facilities, renovation of occupied spaces, HVAC, roofing, painting, protective coating, and a disaster response team, and is currently participating in the Small Business Administration's 8A Business Development Program. And for those of you that do not know, this is for veteran, disabled veteran, and minority-owned businesses for set-asides for large government contracts. She has utilized local SBA resource partners, the Alabama Procurement Technical Assistance Center, which is a part of the Alabama Small Business Development Center as well. Ladies and gentlemen, the owner of Vanguard Pacific of Foley, Alabama, Sidney Cody. Both of these are women-owned small businesses of Baldwin County, and Commissioner Underwood, you would like to know, they both attended Foley High School.
Go Lions!
There you go. Thank you, thank you. Do you mind if we go ahead and take our photo at this time, now that we're all up here? Do you mind if we go ahead and take our photo at this time now that we're all up here?
Do we need to go this way? Okay, everybody move this way. Slide, slide, slide. Okay. Move, move, move. Come on. Come on. Yeah, we gotta switch real quick. Those are the two recipients.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, sir. I worked for a bunch of people when I was a Marine. Yeah. I was a Marine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate your time, and I will read the proclamation for the National Small Business Week. Whereas, America's strongest economic growth in almost 40 years has been driven by the resilience of our small businesses, which despite a worldwide pandemic, continue to pioneer innovative solutions to our country's greatest challenges and create opportunities for families and workers. Whereas, small businesses remain the heartbeat of our communities in the American economy. And let me add to that, in Baldwin County and the state of Alabama, over 99% of all businesses in our state are considered small and have been responsible for over 50% of job growth during the pandemic. Whereas, historic investments made through the President's American Rescue Plan and other acts ensure small businesses with, that have access to federal capital support, technical assistance, contracting opportunities, and other resources. Whereas, we support small businesses, jobs are created, and local communities preserve their unique culture. Whereas, entrepreneurship continues to be one of the best pathways to the American dream. Whereas, by renewing our commitment to supporting small businesses, we can maintain our global competitiveness, build a stronger nation where everyone can succeed. Whereas, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. small business. Whereas, the Baldwin County Commission supports and joins in this national effort to recognize the contribution of small businesses to the American economy and their importance in ensuring that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in this regular session assembled the week of April 30, 2023 through May 6, 2023, is hereby set aside as Small Business, National Small Business Week in Baldwin County, and the Baldwin County Commission joins the Alabama Small Business Development Center Network in their collaborative efforts to participate in small business support throughout Baldwin County. Thank you, Commissioners, for your consideration.
I make a motion, we adopt the proclamation.
All right. Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McKenzie. Any further discussion?
I'll make it quick. As a partner in a woman-majority-owned CPA firm, this is great. Yes, yes. Small business is what we do.
That's right.
So, it's the heartbeat of this. I know we can't survive without the big guys, but at the same time, there's so many little guys who went by the wayside because of the big guys, but, you know, it's the heartbeat of these little guys. When I say little, I don't mean that in a condescending way. I'm talking about the size of the businesses, so I better rephrase that. But the only thing I will say is that it's so sad sometimes to see, once the generations get older and die out, some of those businesses, there's nobody to continue them on. So, I just hope that a lot of these businesses that we have out here, that there will be generations to come after you to continue on your businesses.
There we go. Amen.
Get that succession plan in place.
That's right, that's right.
All right, congratulations on receiving these two awards. It's prestigious to have them both from Baldwin County. It makes us proud, and just wanted to extend that congratulations and gratitude for what y'all do to contribute to this great county. Thank you.
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you also. If my wife was here, she would want to go ahead and get with Ms. Yolanda about starting a small business.
That's right.
She wants too bad, so, but thank you all for what y'all do.
Thank you all so very much. Christine, I personally know you very well. You know, you took this initiative that you created and moved forward with it, and I think, you know, I want to thank you for your, what you're doing for, you know, environment and everything else.
Yes, sir.
And y'all are doing, just doing a good job with it.
Yes.
And every one of y'all's small business is very, very important.
Yes, sir.
You know, the big boxes have their things, but the small business has a personal touch to it.
That's right.
And that's what, that's what it's all about, so.
Absolutely. They are our heartbeat, truly.
All right, well, I've got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to adopt this proclamation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and your consideration, and always your small business support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is item DA four, which is a proclamation regarding Mental Health Awareness Month. The members from the National Alliance on Mental Health Illness are here to accept the proclamation. I will be glad to read the proclamation at this time. Proclaiming the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Whereas, all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas, there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency. And whereas, mental health conditions are real, with one in five individuals living with a mental health condition in our nation, with the other four family members or friends, therefore affecting nearly 100% of our population. And whereas, with effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, over 500,000 Americans live with tardive dyskinesia, sorry, if I butchered it, I apologize, a movement disorder resulting from certain mental health medications. And whereas, the first week of May is designated as Tardive Dyskinesia Awareness Week. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support education and prevention efforts. And whereas, the Baldwin County Commission commends NAMI, which is National Alliance on Mental Illness, Baldwin, to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled, that the month of May 2023 is hereby set aside as Mental Health Awareness Month, and the first week in May 2023 is hereby set aside as Tardive Dyskinesia Awareness Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. And the Baldwin County Commission joins NAMI, Baldwin, in their collective efforts to participate in mental health awareness throughout Baldwin County.
Y'all want to get, y'all want to get a photo?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm a little nervous. This is my first meeting. I know you all know someone, you love someone, you support someone in your life, friends, neighbors, that have a serious mental illness. And NAMI is a national organization, and we support and educate people like you all, me, you know, family members that support loved ones. We offer education, education classes that are at no, you know, we don't charge anybody to take the classes, to learn about the signs and break the stigma that comes along with a mental illness. We also provide peer-led support groups for the people that are in recovery in Mobile as of right now. We're trying to get our people together that are, you know, the peers that, you know, need support. So, we kind of move people over to the NAMI Mobile group, but the support group that we offer here in Baldwin County is very active, and we meet twice a month over Zoom as of right now, because, you know, it's kind of easier to get people, you know, it's more comfortable, you know, to have people, you know, do it that way. And, yeah, so, thank you for having us. I'm a little nervous, but thank you so much.
You did great. You did awesome.
See how I feel up here.
Did I miss anything?
Well, I just want to add that mental illness has no, does not discriminate. It crosses all boundaries, income, age, racial. So, we really appreciate your support and glad to have you be a part of the efforts to make Baldwin County whole.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much, you know, for y'all's comments on this. So, Commissioners, I hear a motion to proclaim the month for Mental Health Awareness Month.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I second.
Commissioner Ball, I made the motion and seconded by Commissioner McKenzie. Discussion, Commissioner?
Just, just thank y'all for what you do. I know this commission has addressed this in several meetings, as we are seeing kind of a spike in our local crimes around the area, and, you know, a lot of people are focusing on the crime when people need to be focusing on what I call the common denominator, which is mental illness. And until we have a big-led focus on this problem, it's never going to be addressed. This is a state problem, not a county problem. And, and I would suggest to take arms up with us and help us get to the legislative body of the state of Alabama, that mental health needs to be readdressed in the state, beds need to be created, and the facilities need to be brought back up in order for this to take place. Our jails are not a house for mentally ill. They should not be there, and that's where they are now, because they just keep reoffending because they don't know what else to do. So, if you all ever want to help us out, we need a charge led to Montgomery to plead with legislation and our governor, that we need beds and we need space, and we need to have this effort collaboratively, and I will support y'all, and this commission will support y'all in that effort, because we are seeing it with our own eyes and our own community, and we need help. So, thank you all again for the efforts that y'all put forward, and it's an honor to be with y'all today as y'all receive this proclamation.
Just wanted to, you know, say thank you also. I want to thank the law enforcement. They have to deal with that. Being a retired state trooper, I didn't have that many cases I deal with on the road, but I had some mental cases that I had to deal with, and it was tough. It's really tough. So, shout out to the law enforcement for doing this, and thank y'all. Thank y'all for doing this.
Thank you. I first learned of NAMI back in, I was in leadership Baldwin in 2018, and that was one of the projects was, was, was NAMI. And I thought that that was a great opportunity to learn about, that, when you mentioned the classes, it is so important, you know, any type of, I know that this is focused on a particular area in the mental illness arena, but, you know, just having, having knowledge in how to interact with someone, you know, my mom had dementia, passed away, you had to know how to even communicate with someone with dementia. You know, you don't say what you want for lunch, or what you have for lunch, better, you know, you know, I mean, it's just, just learning how to rephrase how you talk to people, and you are so right, it has no boundaries, you know. So, thank you. I know that you probably have a reason why you're involved in this, and, and, you know, thank you, because time is valuable, and I'm sure that one life saved is worth it all. Thank you. Yes.
Just thank you also very much. Mental health, you know, nowadays is being treated as a, as a crime a lot of times, because the only way they can get his help is to go to jail most of the time, and that's not the answer. You know, treatment is in a facility which, you know, we don't have right now, we used to have, stayed down away with it, but at least, you know, we've got to come up with something that'll help, you know, with this disease, because it is a disease, you know, and we just got to come up with something to help with it and make it, because they're not criminals, you know, and they don't belong in jail. But, you know, they have, that's the only way you're getting somebody's things is committing them, and, you know, they got to go to jail first before they do that, and that's not the way to run it, you know, but anyway. Thank you all so very much for what y'all do, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is item DA five. DA five, proclaiming Fair Housing Month, April 2023. Ms. Jennifer.
Proclaiming the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas, April 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of the signing of the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas Baldwin Realtors is committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their right to fair housing. And whereas the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, family status, handicap, and national origin. And whereas fair housing improves economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities. And whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the National Association of Realtors and Baldwin Realtors to serve their clients, customers, and communities. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to, to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission and regular session assembled that we hereby proclaim April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in Baldwin County, Alabama.
Good morning, commissioners.
Go ahead.
Okay. President Lyndon B. Johnson signed the Fair Housing Act into law April 11, 1968. The Act states it is the policy of the United States to provide within constitutional limitations for fair housing throughout the United States. The 1968 Fair Housing Act prohibited discrimination based on race, color, religion, and national origin. In 1974, the Fair Housing Act was amended to prohibit discrimination based on sex. Today, the National Association of Realtors prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin by Realtors and Realtor Associates. The National Association of Realtors, or NAR, is America's largest trade association representing 1.6 million members. The term Realtor is a registered collective membership mark that identifies a real estate professional who is a member of NAR and subscribes to its strict code of ethics, which includes Article 10 on upholding the Fair Housing Act. As a local chapter to NAR, Baldwin Realtors raises up ethical experts committed to fair housing. Every April, Realtors commemorate the passage of the Fair Housing Act, signed into law April 11, 1968, and reflect on housing discrimination and segregation past and present. As community leaders, real estate professionals have an opportunity to be part of equitable, equitable, and inclusive change. Today, Baldwin Realtors invite all Baldwin County to join us in advancing equitable opportunities and expanding homeownership.
Okay, thank you. Y'all want to get the picture, get a group picture?
Thank you. Would it be better standing up here or down there?
We'll get up there.
Down there? All right.
I'm going to have to slide that.
Don't get out of the picture.
Do I hear a motion that we proclaim the, this month for the Fair Housing Month?
I'll make that question.
An emotion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie.
He wanted to say Billy Joe.
Wanted to say Billy Joe, but I couldn't. But anyway, so do I hear a motion for that? I got it. And I got a second. Now, any further discussion?
Oh, well.
No, I just thank you all for doing this. Thank you all because I'm learning more as being on the commission. I didn't know that we do this, so I'm really proud to be part of all, all the things that we've done today. And so thank you all. Thank you, Jennifer, and you're, y'all need Realtors, so thank you all.
Hey, you guys do way more things than I ever thought.
Yes.
The Realtors Association is, is really involved and, and I am, I'm actually like now, I'm learning more and more things that you guys do and thank you for your efforts in not just this, but all the other things that you do. I think a lot of people may have the misconception that all you guys want to do is buy and sell something. I think that that's, that, that does have a, a part of it, but the thing about it is you're doing so much more to give back to the community and we appreciate that.
And just thank you all. I know the, the word Realtors does a lot. They're very active in our community and they just want to do what's, what's right for, for the citizens of this county and the ones that are coming here that need some housing and just try to make it better for them to be able to afford housing. I know right now in Baldwin County, affordable housing is another story, but, you know, y'all are doing everything you can to help, so thank you so very much. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Next, Mr. Chairman is item DA six, which is a proclamation, National Library Week. Commissioner Underwood and Ms. Elizabeth Webb.
Last but not least. Yes, okay. So I'm going to read the proclamation, proclaiming April 23rd through 29th, 2023 as National Library Week in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission and regular session assembled that the week of April 23rd through 29th, 2023 is hereby designated as National Library Week 2023, themed "There's More to the Story" in Baldwin County. And we encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. Congratulations and thank you for all that you do. I know you work very hard. And would you like to say something?
Um, yes, I just want to step over for a second. Thank you guys so much for all of the support you've recently given us. Just in the last, at the end of today, over the last four days, we will have delivered almost 2,000 items around the county on the courier service. The assistance you guys provided allowed that to happen and huge thanks for the.
The van.
Yes, for the van.
That's the van, the van.
Yeah, didn't know if I was allowed to say that.
Oh, yeah.
It's public.
But yes, thank you for purchasing us a new van, very much needed transmission, fell out the bottom of the last one, so really, really thankful.
Take better care of this one.
Yes, yes.
I'm messing with you. All right, thank you. Come up here and give.
Yep, we'd all like to take a picture.
Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you for what you do. Yes, ma'am? Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, do I hear a motion? We.
I'll make a motion.
Adopt the proclamation for the National Library Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023. Made a motion by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball.
Yeah, I'll second it. I didn't know he left. You got it.
They keep leaving on us.
Okay, comments?
Just, yeah, thank you all for what you do. I enjoy the library system as well as Commissioner Underwood does, probably not as open and enthusiastic about it as Commissioner Underwood because I can, libraries bring back like post-traumatic childhood disorder to me with Dewey Decimal Systems and all that stuff and having the card catalogs and people don't even use that anymore in today's technologies. But yes, thank you all for what you do and it's, and it's proud to be a, a partner with y'all.
Thank you, guys. I won't belate, I won't, you know, keep on and on and on, but I think Elizabeth's already left. Thank you, guys, also from the member libraries for your support and just all libraries. It's just not about just the PCLC, but that, that support base, I'm just so glad that we're, we're making progress and I am so excited about that. You just have no idea what a joy that brings. And so I appreciate you guys' support. I'm glad we finally got everything on track and, you know, libraries are so, so important because just like we were talking about earlier, how, you know, different things don't have any boundaries. You guys don't have boundaries either. You serve everybody and there is no excuse for people not having the resources that they need. It is there, okay? And if you don't have a car, you can get a brat's bus to come down there or whatever you need. So, but with the, I mean, just about everybody, I don't care how rich, poor, whatever you are, old, young, it's about everybody's got one of these things and you can check your books out on Kindle, it's free, all that kind of stuff. So there is no excuse, you know, I still love to hold a book in my hand from time to time, but the resources that are out there and the way that you guys can help people who are looking for jobs, they don't have computers or different things like that. And so if y'all have been here through our whole meeting, you understand how important it is to get people to work. And when I mean to work, I'm talking about commuting to work. Yeah, it's good to get people to work, get them want to work, you know, that's something can't, but giving them transportation, getting them to the libraries, you guys do so much. And one day when I'm not working 50,000 jobs at one time, I want to come and do some of that genealogy stuff that's down at, I think the Foley Library. Yeah, yeah, I know some of my folks are up in that books, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you all so very much for what y'all do for the library system and all the libraries. It's like I say, you know, there, there's a lot of people still like to pick up that book and read it versus, you know, listening to it on tape or whatever. So y'all, y'all do a good job and I, and then we've got, we've got a great library system here in the county, you know, with all the libraries getting together and sharing their assets with everybody. So that makes it a whole lot better, you know, with the courier, you need a book, you can call in, say, I want this book and whichever library's got it, they'll have it for you. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next.
Next, Mr. Chairman is item DA seven, severe weather preparedness town hall announcement. Mr. Zach Hood and Ms. Jessica Waters.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you all know, we try to do a great job with outreach and talking with schools. In fact, I had opportunity to talk with a group of first graders not too long ago. We were going over sheltering and what it means to shelter, lowest floor, center room. A student asked me, they raised their hand, they said, hey, when I shelter, is it important to shut the door? And I said, absolutely. And she goes, well, then my mom and dad shelter all the time. So it's a great story. It's a great opportunity to get in and speak with students and people here. Here's, here's the thing I wanted you to know about what we have coming up is severe weather preparedness town hall. Our flyer's on the screen. It's going to be May 2nd from 4 to 8 and we're going to talk about everything from sheltering to weather alerts, what those alerts mean. As you know, there's a lot of confusion on what a watch is, what a warning is, how to act during a watch versus a warning. So we're going to have the, the leaders in our preparedness and from our broadcast media out to discuss this. We're going to have Jessica Chase, National Weather Service Mobile. We're going to have all of the chief staff meteorologists from our local news. And never did I expect it to grow into what it is, but I will say it has become what it will be because there is a need. And so we're going to target the first week of May each and every year for a severe weather, weather preparedness town hall. It's going to be great. It's from 4 to 8. And again, you will not be sitting in a seat, listening to someone speak for four hours. The first few hours, there's a, going to be municipalities set up, our local electric services are going to be participating, many, 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 I don't want to call them vendors because they're stakeholders in the community, they're public servants. So there's various organizations in our communities that maybe you haven't connected with or you haven't seen them in a while. It's just an opportunity to be together and it's going to be fantastic. Debbie Williams is going to be our EMC. Chairman Gruber is going to open us up. And so we're just, we're really excited to represent everything that we do, not only in EMA, but some of the other county departments and then also what you support as a commission here locally, we want to be able to do that. The last thing I have is on the same day, again, we have partnered with Gulf Coast Media and we have our. and we have our second copy of Stay Alert Baldwin coming, and it's gonna be improved from last year. But basically, it's gonna be three years of just everything from pandemic to disaster to hurricane season. We kept notes and questions that were frequently asked, contact numbers that were sought after. We've compiled that, we continue to do that, we put it in one place. And not only will it be a printed copy, but it will be a PDF version on our webpage by downloading Baldwin County App. So make sure you download Baldwin County Commission App, go to the EMA page, you'll be able to download the PDF straight to your phone, or you can access it if you don't want to download it. But the key is, is we want you to be connected locally. One challenge we do have is we're up against national media and the way they market, and it's not necessarily the best for our community. We want to make sure that we get information locally, that the resources are known about, that they're utilized, because what we are doing as a county is only as good as we advertise or make people know or aware of. And so we want to make sure you download the Baldwin County Commission App, go to the EMA page, sign up for the weather alert, and hopefully we will see you all on May 2nd for the preparedness town hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Zach. Thank you, Zach. Okay. Next on the agenda is Item FA1.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, y'all do need to make a vote on that, which is to, will be to...
Abolish.
Letter of support. Letter of support, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to send a letter to the legislatures and recommend that they change this, you know, a letter of support for this, what they want to do. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next.
You covered Item FR1. Next up is American Rescue Plan Act, Item GA1, which is project number HW1910300, Coverville Lane Drainage Improvements for the Baldwin County Commission. Please note for the record that we've added an amending resolution to increase the funding.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation to increase funding as presented by staff for this project.
Second. I got a motion by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve Item Number GA1. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is Item GA2, Resolution 2023-63, His Allocation of American Rescue Plan Act Funds for Ventilation System Improvements in the Baldwin County Commission Building Occupied by the Baldwin County Board of Educationists.
Some move?
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve Item Number GA2. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our next item, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is Item GA3, which is Resolution 2023-64, Allocation of American Rescue Plan Act Funds for Ventilation System Improvements in the Baldwin County Fairhope Satellite Courthouse.
Some move? I got a motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Next, you've already covered Item GA4.
Okay.
We have two addenda for your consideration. First addenda item is Item HA1, Cindy Hayford Center Board Appointment.
Commissioners.
Is that Lisa? I don't have my computer's not up.
Let me see.
Lisa Salters, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve their recommendation to appoint Lisa Thompson's alters to the Cindy Hayford Board.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve Item Number HA1. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Next, item, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is Item HA2, which is Resolution 2023-102, An amended tax abatement agreement with E-Covery LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we take staff's recommendation as outlined in our agenda to approve Item HA2.
I got a motion made by Commissioner Ball.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Underwood to approve Resolution Number 2023-102, The amended tax abatement agreement with E-Covery LLC. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That concludes the agenda, Commissioners.
Commissioners, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the following matrix of how our organization is gonna be restructured. And I'll read it off so that everybody understands where it's, how it's structured. You'll have the county commission on top. We will have a chief administrative officer, which is administrator, county engineer, and we're going to take juvenile detention and put it up on top also because it does not fit anywhere really within the rest of the organization. Now, under the administrator, the clerk treasurer's office, the budget director, personnel director, communication and information system, archives and history, commission offices, council on aging, building maintenance, citizens service center, and grants will all report to the administrator. Under the county engineers thing, you will have planning and zoning, development and economic development director, building official, emergency management director, animal shelter, Baldwin County Regional Area Transit, and parks. Commissioners, I'll make the motion, I'd like to hear a second.
I got a second on that, Mr. Chairman, and I just wanted to note for the record that the development environmental directors are solid waste directors.
Solid waste, yes, yeah.
And yes, Mr. Chairman, you've got the second.
All right, I got the mo-- I made the motion and the second by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this will be how we're going to restructure our commission. Okay. Next, we went over senior staff already, I think during the work session. Does anything else, have anything else to want to bring back up on that that they need to since we had the workshop?
I don't believe so, thank you, sir.
Okay. Attorneys report, we don't have anything?
No, sir.
Public comments? Is there any public comments? Anyone want to speak? Press questions? No press question. Commission comments? Commissioner Ball?
Yeah, I got a couple. I'm not gonna stay here long, but the first thing I wanted to say between meetings, we didn't, this happened, another community figure locally that has helped a lot of people out was Mr. Leon Allen. It passed and ran the gas station there in downtown Daphne. He has been a benefit and an asset and a loyal friend to a lot of people in this community, and he was laid to rest over the weekend, and I just wanted to continue prayers for the Mr. Leon's family. Commissioner Underwood and I have a friend in common with our plan committee. He's also the chairman of the Limestone County Commission. His name is Colin Daly, and I just wanted to extend our sincere prayers to him and his family as he and his wife are enduring the tragic loss of their son. Colin knows that we're all behind him just because he is a county commissioner in Limestone County. We're a big family, and he's part of this family as well, and he supports everything we do here, and we support everything he does there. I just wanted to extend heartfelt prayers and thoughts as they are going through this tragic time. I also wanted to thank the three of you guys, my colleagues, that we all work together. This effort that we just did today with organizational start chart was a collaborative and unified effort between the four of us. We're taking big steps in recreating this organizational structure because Baldwin County deserves the best. We're growing at rapid rates. Our organizational structure needs to be changed to accommodate this growth, and we look forward to continuing on with this mission that we have decided as a body to do. So I just wanted to thank you four, or you four, you three plus me, right, in doing this because it's a collaborative effort. And sometimes it appears, if you watch video cameras and past meetings and stuff, if sometimes during the process of a unified front like we have up here, you'll have a common two-to-two vote on something or three-to-one vote on something. That doesn't mean we're un-unified, and there are people in the public that are picking up acting like something's wrong with us if we're disagreeing on some things. So I want the public to know, and anybody who has any questions or doubt about this commission, that we stand strong together as four people. We're a unified front, even though sometimes it doesn't appear like it. We're a unified front, we get along with each other just fine. There's gonna be times that we agree to disagree, and that's part of a governmental process. So for those who think any differently, you can rest assured that you're wrong. Okay? And that's my statement for today.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie?
I just want to say to the staff, thank y'all for putting all this together today, all the awards, everybody that's contributed, thank you. Ron, I just want to say thank you for your service. You're leaving, since I've been here, you've been a great asset to me, you've helped me, and I really appreciate everything you've done for me, just like with Joey. Yeah, so thank you. We're gonna, you know, I'm gonna miss you, and I think the commission will and the staff, but congratulations on what you want to do next.
Commissioner Underwood.
Thank you, fellow commissioners. This has been a monumental thing for us to come together and realize that, you know what, we need to do the best that we can for this commission, for our employees, and for Baldwin County is a place where everybody seems to want to come to, and we need to make sure that we do our part to make it the best that we can, our abilities. I want to thank the staff as always for all that you guys do. I appreciate everything that you guys do to help me, and Ron, thank you. I wish you the best. And this has been a long meeting when you have a work session and that, and for all you out there, if you think I look tired, I am. I've been working a lot of hours on my other job, and so now I'm not sick, but you know what? Today is tax day, and it's gonna pass. So maybe next couple of weeks I'll look a little more refreshed, and, but thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I just want to thank the staff for what they've done to get us to this meeting, you know, with all the proclamations and all the awards that were given out today. There's quite a bit of stuff going on with that. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners for us getting together and being able to come up with an organizational chart that we're all gonna live by. And I think it's very important that we move forward on some of the stuff, starting advertising. And if y'all don't, if the commission does not mind, I'd like to ask our attorney and our personnel director to let, we're gonna sit down with them, or some of us will sit down and go over these job descriptions, and we want to get this because that's gonna be the main thing, because our contracts, which we will be bringing up very shortly, hopefully the first meeting in May, we'll be able to get all the contracts signed and move forward a little bit more. And I know our county engineer is, you know, is leaving, so that's one that's really gonna have to be advertised with, and we're gonna have to redo that one because we need to include what their job duties are in it, so we're gonna re-advertise that one and adjust, you know, the salaries accordingly. And it's same way with the administrator and also the budget director. We got to start on that. So those are three important things that we're gonna have to get done as fast as we can. And I hope y'all, well, you know, we can all get that done and get it over with. So with that being said...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask, I didn't know we were doing farewell speeches to you, Ron, today, so I, Matt caught me off guard with that, but I'm gonna do farewell speeches when y'all leave. I mean, you know, y'all, you're gonna give us a time, and they'll say, "Hey, this is gonna be my last meeting," and, you know, I may bake a cake or something, who knows? We'll see.
I'm waiting on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just not, I'm just not used to telling people bye when you're still gonna be here for a little while, so I will correctly do it when both you and Joey, as the last days here at this facility, so, but you know how much I appreciate everything.
I will be here for the next meeting for sure.
Well, I just, I want to say thank you to Ron, you know, we have worked, we have worked quite a bit together over a few years, and we've got a lot accomplished, and I just want to wish him the very best, you know, his next endeavor. So with that being said, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Yes.
All right, we, this meeting is adjourned at 11:43.